Three, our meeting, the voting board meeting for August 27, 2015 is now in order. Let's have a moment of silence and then the Pledge of Allegiance. Please stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Velazquez, call the roll, please.
Kimberly Jackson. Cedric Barber II. Tryder McCooy, here. Margaret Shepherd.
Here.
Julius Wiegand.
Yes.
Ryan Colton.
Right there.
Ryan James.
Here.
Edward Connelly.
Here.
For whom is present.
Any additions or deletions?
Good afternoon, Jeff Gagnon, planning zone administrator. There are a few additions. What staff ended up doing is going back through the packet that was distributed and adding page numbers, so the table of contents now has red page numbers indicating what page each section starts on, as well as throughout the PDF, there is sequential numbering of each page, that way it'll make it easier to reference a certain section or page. Additionally, we did receive correspondence from the Singer Island Civic Association, which has been distributed to the board, and copies are available in the back of the room. And on an unfortunate note, we did receive correspondence from Mr. Hamilton prior to the meeting, and he has resigned from the board, so he will not be in attendance tonight or in the future. One final addition I'd like to add. Within the staff report, under letter B, the last sentence, it just ended abruptly, and what the intent of that sentence was is to read the applicant desires to go east of the 1997 coastal construction control line. As currently stated, it just says, "The applicant desires to," and then it's just blank, so that was the intent of that sentence. And that is the end of additions and deletions.
Thank you, Mr. Gagnon. Any disclosures by board members and adoption of the agenda?
I was asked by, I think, a representative of the Wellness Resort to have a meeting with them, which I did, it was last month, July the 28th, just to go over what their version of the Wellness Spa was.
Any other?
Yes, Chair. I also met with representatives of the Wellness Resort and Spa on Sunday, August 9th.
Any others?
Margaret, I'm sorry, Margaret Shepherd, I did meet with the Wellness Spa on this past Friday, I think it was.
Mr. McQuaid.
Mr. Chair, I also met with the applicant and their representatives.
Also, I met with the applicant twice, one to get a review, and second time to have some questions that I raised answered. I also received a third phone call, but did not respond to immediately. Mr. McQuaid.
I'll see yourself upon some of the applicants, people and others, I did not meet with anyone. I tell them I respond to these tonight, and I will review everything, I have gone over this from past Saturday, I have visited the site, and I'm just hoping that we can get together and do something tonight, thank you.
Do I have a motion to adopt the agenda? So moved.
Second.
Mr. Velazquez.
Tryder McCooy.
Yes.
Margaret Shepherd.
Yes.
Julius Wiegand.
Yes.
Ryan Colton.
Yes.
Ryan James.
Yes.
Edward Connelly.
Yes.
Anyone who's voting, motion approved.
Okay, approval of the minutes from the July 23, 2015 meeting. Do I have a motion? So moved.
Second.
Motion moved and second. Mr. Velazquez.
Tryder McCooy.
Yes.
Margaret Shepherd.
Yes.
Julius Wiegand.
Here.
Ryan Colton.
Yes.
Ryan James.
Card. Yes.
Edward Connelly.
Yes.
Anyone who's voting, motion approved.
Gagnon, any new business, unfinished business, I'm sorry.
Not tonight.
Okay, moving on to new business then. What we'll do with the new business is staff will make their presentation, the applicant can make their presentation, we'll have public comments, then the board will address questions.
Thank you, Mr. Gagnon. Tonight, we have one item under new business. In the project description, it's an application from the Metropolitan Park, agent for property owner, Kanish Pandya, which is staff number SP1408, is requesting site plan approval to develop 7.1 acres of land at 3100 North Ocean Drive, known by parcel control number 56434226010010030, and also parcel control number 56434227030130120. In order to construct two 20-story high-rise buildings consisting of 150 resort hotel rooms and 209 resort hotel suites westward of the 1979 coastal construction control line located within the resort hotel RH Zoney District. So within the PowerPoint presentation, this is a table of content, so we'll move through it, I may have referred to the staff report throughout the presentation as well. What the intent of the presentation was to really truncate and compress the information into a format where it was more easily understandable, easy to discern, because the pack itself is over 550 pages, it's rather voluminous, but we had to include the information just to make sure that all the information was present and that all bases were covered. So moving forward, we're looking at the location map, site aerial, and also site photos. Also, please note that the information within the PowerPoint presentation is also available within the packet, so there's no new information that's presented. There may be some areas that are highlighted that aren't in the packet itself, but the images and the maps were all available a week before the meeting. So again, this is the subject area, it's two parcels, 3100 North Ocean Drive. The north is the Marriott, 3200 North Ocean Drive, and to the south is the Tierra condominiums, 3000 North Ocean Drive, to the west Surf Road, North Harbor Drive, to the east, the Atlantic Ocean. There are two beach access points to both the north and south of 3100 North Ocean. I have some photos of the southern access point, as well as walking along that access point, looking across the property. This is the one that access point facing northeast, you can see the Marriott property is in this photo. Additionally, this is looking northwest. This is at the end of the Dune Access, looking back west across the site, you can see the Tierra building on the left. This is a view from North Ocean Drive, east towards the Atlantic Ocean. This is also a view from North Ocean Drive at the east. And this is the northern beach access point, which is just south of the Marriott property at 3200 North Ocean Drive. So these photos were taken from that beach access, facing south, you can see the Tierra condominium in the background. This photo shows the access point itself. And this is the terminus point of the access, once you've reached the beach, facing south. So relevant information was the coastal construction control line map. Recently, there was a moratorium put in place, and the city had changed development regulations concerning the easternmost development line that's permitted on Singer Island in various zoning districts. This zoning district is one of its own districts where the development line was changed, so this image may look similar or familiar to most of you. The property that we're discussing now is 3100. It may be difficult to see, however, the purple line is the 1979 coastal construction control line, and the blue line is the 97 coastal construction control line. This image zooms in, and the distance between the two lines is less than 100 feet, it's approximately 85 feet or so, and it varies depending on which point you measure from. So going back to the history of the site itself, there was a variance that was approved back in 2004, and the staff report does describe that, there's three variances that were granted by the zoning board adjustment. Variance one had to do with the east-to-west length of the building. Typically, the development regulations require that to be no greater than 200 feet, however, there was 170-foot variance granted to that to allow for a 370-foot long building. Variance two dealt with the north-to-south building width, and the code requires or allows up to a 120-foot long building. A variance was granted at this time for an additional 75 feet, which allowed 195-foot building length. Variance three was granted by the zoning board adjustment in 2004, had to do with the high-rise definition and how the setback was calculated for that high-rise definition, which is no longer applicable to this site. The applicant is currently looking to utilize both variance one and variance two in a partial manner, and variance three is no longer relevant because the setbacks are met without variance So one of the most important points, and one of the most important discussion points for us tonight, is a condition associated with the variance approved by the zoning board adjustment in 2004. Specifically, it was that the applicant shall utilize the requested variances to develop the property substantially consistent with the elevation and site plan presented to the zoning board adjustment. So currently, and if you've read the staff report in full, there seems to be disagreement whether or not the currently proposed site plan does meet this condition, and staff currently feels as if it does not. Proceeding through this presentation, I'll demonstrate why that's the case. To further understand this condition and to understand staff's view of substantially consistent, we've interpreted this to mean largely similar, almost identical, providing for variations not easily recognized. That's also contained within the staff report, it's page six of the staff report, PDF page So with the variance back in 2004, a site plan was presented to the zoning board adjustment. This site plan, again, incorporates both parcels, north, obviously north, waters to the east, to the right side, North Ocean Drive runs north and south, and Tera's to the south. So at that point in time, there were two buildings that were proposed that were joined at this location, and on the east side, there was a 20-story building proposed, and on the west side, there was a nine-story building proposed. So that created a tiered approach or a wedding cake approach to account for the elevation along North Ocean Drive, to not have as much massing as you're driving along North Ocean Drive or walking along North Ocean Drive. That was thought to be more aesthetically pleasing by the applicant at the time, and also by the zoning board adjustment apparently. So this site plan was the reason why those variances were granted. This was the elevation provided to the zoning board adjustment. Again, the nine-story building was in front and 20-story building behind, so just for comparison one more time, if you're standing along North Ocean Drive, this elevation would be the same if you're standing along North Ocean Drive looking towards the water, you'd have that nine-story building in front and the 20-story building behind. And that 20-story building had a wave effect to it, which was, again, thought to be more aesthetically pleasing. There's an example provided by the applicant at the time of this two-box tower proposal that was supposed to demonstrate what was not aesthetically pleasing and what the applicant did not want to do. So again, you can see there was a two-tower design that was provided to the board once again as a demonstration of what the code would require them to do if the variances weren't granted, and this was something that the applicant did not want to do at the So shortly after the zoning board adjustment meeting, the project planning zoning board and also city council, the site plans that we just saw were presented to city council, and was approved through resolution by council, and that's staff number SP0426. So this is the identical site plan that we just saw, except this is a color version. So again, this is a 20-story building, and then the nine-story building to the west. Additionally, during the city council meeting, this elevation and color perspective was provided, which once again shows this nine-story building, which if you're standing from North Ocean Drive, you'd have the nine-story building in front, and further to the east is a 20-story building, you can kind of see the wave approach of the larger 20-story building from this And again, elevation associated with the site plan, you can see there was a six-story building in front and a 20-story building behind, and these are the different north-south, east and west elevations. So once again, the applicant has provided a new site plan application, and they are looking to utilize variances that were previously granted for the new site plan. What's currently proposed is a two-tower design, they're both 20-story structures, and there is not the nine-story step-up or tiered approach that was previously presented to the zoning board adjustment. So the current site plan is looking to utilize that north-south building variance length partially, and also the east-west building length, in order to allow for longer 20-story structures. However, staff feels that this is not substantially consistent with the site plan that was presented to the zoning board adjustment and also to the city council that was approved shortly thereafter. So this is a more current elevation, this would be associated with the current development proposal, and there's an attempt of facade to break up the building elevation itself, but when you look at it, it's just the 20-story building, and this again would be standing, if you were on North Ocean Drive looking towards the water, you would have this 20-story building massing that would be your first impression of the design and of the development. This is the same aerial, just using the same elevation, just a color version. This would be viewing the property and development, which is currently proposed from the Tierra, so looking north. This would be from the Marriott looking south. And this would be from the beach, only one of the buildings captured here, but there would be a second building further west on the property. This is the landscape plan associated with the current proposal, again, there's the And this image was provided to demonstrate the two coastal construction control lines. So previously, in 2004, the plan was approved with developing up to the 1979 coastal construction control line. Again, currently, the regulations would require that development adhere to the 1997 coastal construction control line, being that the application was provided to the city prior to the moratorium coming into play, and prior to discussion of updating our development regulations to account for the new coastal construction control line as the easternmost development standard. The city so far has honored the fact that they have applied prior to, so we are proceeding with review of the site plan to allow construction up to the 1979 coastal construction control To give you further information as far as the massing of the current proposal, and also the shadow study, I wanted to quickly show the board and the general public both the massing study and the shadow study. Again, both of these were provided in the planning zoning packet. So this would be looking west, and this is the westernmost building, and the easternmost building is behind, for reference, laser pointer keeps working, the Tierra building to the right, and the Marriott to the left of this image. So moving along, I'll just show the images, this is the northwest view, northeast view, northeast, southeast, southwest, and then onto the shadow study. The image is difficult to differentiate at times, being that the base layer does have some shadows included, so if we do want to go back and look at this, we most certainly can, but in this example, again, this is at both the winter and summer solstice, that's why these days and times are used, the shadow is this lighter gray area, which you can see progress throughout the day, this is 10:00 in the morning, 11:00 New Time, 1:00, 2:00, 3:00, 4:00. And then summer solstice, 8:00 AM to 9:00 AM, 10:00, 11:00, 12:00, 1:00, 2:00, 3:00, 4:00, and 5:00, 6:00. So again, we can go back and reference either the massing study or the shadow study if the board desires. So at this point, I want to make sure that the board itself is clear on the information. It is a lot of information, it's much more information than's normally presented for any project of the board, so I just want to make sure that all the board members are on the same page at this point.
Do any board members have questions, Mr. Gagnon, at this stage? Mr. Velazquez let the record reflect, and Mr. Barber and Ms. Hamilton, I'm sorry, Ms. Jackson are here.
Yes, sir.
And Mr., excuse me, Chair, if you could also ask for disclosures as?
Oh, yeah, any disclosures from Ms. Jackson or from Mr. Barber?
Yeah, I've met with personnel from the Wellness Center early last week, just to discuss what would be presented to your time.
Thank you, Ms. Jackson.
Also, I met with representative from the Wellness and Spa last week also.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Chair.
Mr. McQuaid.
Questions of the presentation. Mr. Gagnon, who performed the massing in the shadow study? Was that the city, or was that the applicant?
It was requested by the city and done by the applicant. Go ahead.
Mr. Gagnon, what exactly, if, I'm sure you went through it, but can you actually show us again the substantially, what's not substantially consistent in the site plan applications?
Do you want me to discuss staff's definition associated with substantially consistent?
Mr. Chair.
Yes, please. Okay, so going back and referencing the zoning board adjustment approval of three variances, where the blue arrow indicates there's a specific condition associated with granting those variances. That specific condition stated that the applicant shall utilize requested variances to develop the property substantially consistent with the elevation and site plan presented to the zoning board adjustment. So staff currently understands the term substantially consistent to mean largely similar, almost identical, providing for variations not easily recognized, and again, that's within the staff report itself. So the major difference currently that we feel is not substantially consistent is the elevation and location of the buildings themselves. So historically, there was a nine-story building to the west side of the site, and then there was the 20-story building to the east side of the site, indicated in both blue and red here. Again, the elevation had a nine-story building and a 20-story building. And if I can skip ahead to the current proposal. So the currently proposed site plan has a different building layout and design. Instead of having both a nine-story, 20-story building that were connected or appeared to be connected one way or the other, what's proposed currently is two separate 20-story buildings. So there is no elevation, or there is no So there is no elevation or there is no relief from North Ocean Drive as far as having a tiered approach or tiered effect where it's more architecturally pleasing and it's not as much of a visual impact to the residents or anyone in the area itself.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Mr. Gattan, how did staff develop the definition for substantial, substantially consistent?
The city's code is currently silent on that term, and within the ZDA approval of the variances, it doesn't specifically define it. So what staff had to do is just go to common Marion Webster's dictionary and merge two words together, and that's what we're currently utilizing.
Okay. And secondly, the substantial difference that staff finds, how does it hurt, damage, or injure the city or the area? Or how may it, should I say?
I'm not sure the relevance of the question. It comes down to not whether or not it's injurious, in my opinion. It comes down to the condition granted by the zoning board adjustment and whether or not the staff, the staff report and site plan, the names that were previously discussed associated with the granting of the variance, if they truly were consistent with what's being presented. So, for example, if it weren't injurious, then the applicant could apply again for other variances that would be specifically geared towards the site plan, where it wouldn't be transfer of a variance associated with the previous site plan if it weren't injurious to the city.
Do we know the original purpose for the condition? What was the basis behind that condition?
I can't answer that question. It's 10 years ago.
But back to my original question, do you know whether or not the city city would be damaged in any way by the substantial inconsistency?
I think it's really difficult for me to answer that question.
Thank you.
Any other questions on the board? This time?
Mr. McCoy? To the point of, Mr. Barber, the Marion Webster dictionary, I believe you said, was your reference point for substantially consistent?
In other words, we use common usage of those words, and that's what we're utilizing for interpreting that condition.
It was a little mind-boggling to me, but is this industry practice to use a term like substantially consistent in the planning industry in reference? Marion Webster, or is there a planning or language jargon that references substantially consistent that you know of?
I can only offer my opinion on the intent, and my opinion on the intent is that there wouldn't be a drastic change from the site plan presented originally in the future. So it was supposed to be a safeguard to...
I'm just speaking of the definition, Jeff, not so much the intent. In planning practice, is substantially consistent a term or word that's commonly used or commonly accepted among the planning industry? Because I tried to locate it in...
I haven't seen it used elsewhere in the city's documents or in the city's code.
Okay. But again, not so much the city code, but in the industry that I'm speaking of, is this something that's accepted? So from the applicant's standpoint, if they had as planner, would the planner already be able to identify, okay, there's a basis behind substantially consistent, I know what that is, that's been something that's widely used among the industry? That's my question. Is that...
For example, if in the planning field, if someone said FAR, so four area ratio, that would be a common term.
Sure.
And that would be understood by most people in the field. This would not fall into that same category.
So your answer is...
It's not commonly referenced.
Okay.
That's it for now, Mr. Chair, thanks.
Chair?
Ms. James?
I just have one question for staff, also about the definition. Did you get a legal interpretation from legal about the substantially consistent?
The city's legal department did not have an issue with this interpretation.
Thank you.
Chair?
Yes, Ms. Jackson?
Does the current code prohibit the two 20-story buildings?
The current code would allow for two 20-story buildings. However, what it wouldn't allow for is the length that's currently proposed unless the variance is transferred from the original approval to this design. So the length of the building themselves would have to be shortened and smaller. So the applicant could build two towers, however, the length of the towers would be different if variances were not applied to the site plan.
Ms. Jackson? Also, if the other condition would be the coastal construction line, correct?
At this point in time, the city has been processing the application utilizing the 1979 coastal construction control line.
I understand. The question was, would the city allow two 20-story towers on the property? Said yes, but they would have to adhere to the current code. And the current code now is the new coastal construction line.
The current code is the 1997 coastal construction control line. However, the applicant did submit application prior to the city enacting the moratorium and prior to any code changes taking place. So at this point, the city has been moving forward and utilizing the 1979 coastal construction control line for this site plan.
I understand that. My point, though, is if someone was starting from scratch, they could put two 20-story towers on that property, however, they would have to adhere to the 97 coastal construction line, plus the other requirements for building length and setbacks and so forth.
I would say yes to that, yes.
So that I understand it, the condition of the variances that were there and approved by ZDA and City Council were within the footprint of what those variances allowed.
The site plan that was provided to the zoning board adjustment, which appears to be identical to the site plan that was provided to City Council a few months afterwards, were specifically tailored to those exact variances.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Mr. McCoy? Another question, Mr. Chair, if I can. Those specific conditions, I noticed something that was new to me when I seen this project. It appeared that the staff report, I'm sorry, not the staff report, the action report, how was that completed? Because one of the things I didn't understand was the significance of elevation and elevations with the S. How was that presented? Does the actual advisory board members complete that? How does that work?
Typically, the action form is presented to the board upon final decision, and each board member signs it. So anything that's in place is typically there, and the board member signs. So if I can bring it up. So in this case, the chairperson signs it for the board after a final motion is made for each variance, which is each variance is captured at the beginning of the action form, and the chairperson signs for the board.
Follow-up, Mr. Chair?
Go ahead.
Now, is that the following meeting? I will take, take it that it's the following meeting.
The same knowledge is signed at that time.
So it's typed, it's typed during the meeting?
Prior to.
Well, it's typed prior to the meeting. Well, that would raise the next question, then. What if, for whatever reason, they choose not to grant, then are there multiple versions
There could be amendments made to it prior or after.
I'm not sure I follow. Maybe I can word it in a different way. I want to find out, is that, I can't see, is that October 19? Whatever the date is, was that signed on the same day of the meeting?
That would be my understanding, but I wasn't present, so.
Okay, so what is the significance? Because I see elevations on the third sentence down here at the bottom in parentheses. Because it's not very clear on the question that I...
Apparently, I have time. Some versions have an S and some versions don't, so that's why the S is included in parentheses here. Ultimately, I think it has little to no impact, being that even if you take the site plan and elevation, which was provided, so both the site plan and elevation that was shown tonight associated with the ZDA action, that if you consider the location of the structures and the buildings, that whether or not an S was present or not present has almost no relevance.
Okay, I was just curious, because it was a little, it was not too apparent in the type portion of time. That's it for now, thank you.
Okay. Any other questions on the board? Okay, we'll move on to the applicants.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, board members. I'm Larry Smith. I'm representing the applicant, the owner of the 3100 North Ocean property. Commonly refer this as the Amherst property for many months. It's the wellness resort and spa application. I'm a lawyer with Garrett, Dietrich &amp; Ryan in North Palm Beach, and have been a lawyer in North Palm Beach for 33 years, and I'm a 27-year resident of Riviera Beach. I live almost across the street from this property and have for 27 years lived in the same neighborhood as Mr. Canuti. I'm just going to do a couple things here that are housekeeping. I talked to your attorney, Mr. Shutt, before the meeting. It's my understanding that you do not swear witnesses in for the planning and zoning board meeting in Riviera Beach. I didn't recall that. I was going to ask that anybody speaking be sworn, but I guess that's not a requirement of your code, so I'll dispense with that. I have introduced a packet of evidence, which I've given Jeff a copy and I've given our court reporter a copy, that I would like to make a part of the evidence in this proceeding. It really contained, everything in the packet is contained in the staff's files. There's some things in the packet that aren't in your staff report, but everything is in the staff file, except what we're going to present tonight. So you're either going to see it tonight, or it's already in the city's files. The only other thing...
One question, is this wellness report, what are you referring to?
No, I'm referring to a packet that's being held up there. It's got correspondence in it, it's got a variety of things in it that I want to be, I want to make a part of the record of this proceeding. Correspondence back and forth between staff and our team, my letters to Ms. Ryan, her letters back to me, that sort of thing. And the only other thing that I have just given to Jeff and our court reporter, and I'd like to make a part of the record of this proceeding, is Jeff mentioned the CECA letter that was in the back of the room available for review. Our team has responded to the CECA letter, and I just put the response in the record, and I've got Jeff a copy, and I've got our court reporter a copy, too. So I tell you, I've had the pleasure of working on this project for about, well, since January of 2014. The team, which is extensive, has been at it since about October of 2013. I joined in January after that. And we've done a lot of work with staff, we've gone back and forth a lot with staff. Of course, we got interrupted a little bit by the goings-on last summer with regard to the coastal construction control line, so it happened to kind of get in the way of things a little bit. But we're back on track, and we're here in front of you, and we're going to address the substantially consistent issue. But I view that as sort of a small part of the overall project, and you don't want the tail to wag the dog, in my opinion. And I think although staff has presented it as, you know, kind of a bigger picture, a bigger part, I think that after you see what we're going to show you today, you're going to agree that it really isn't such a large part, and really, you're going to find that the project is worthy of approval, and it's a great project. It's going to be a substantial improvement over what was already a superior project that was approved in 2004. And we're going to have several speakers tonight, and I'm just going to run through the speakers. We have a lot of team members here tonight, I'm not going to name everybody that's here, but we have a lot of people that can answer your questions after we make our presentation. But following me is going to be James Brown, he's the project developer. Jim has extensive development experience, and I'm going to let him tell you, and I'll let each speaker tell you a little bit more about their own development or their own experiences in a particular field. After Jim is going to be Don Delaney. Don's an economist. He's had extensive experience with economic development in many, many municipalities, a lot of local governments. He's worked for two governors and spearheaded their initiatives for economic development in different parts of the state. And I'm going to have Don Herring come up after Don Delaney. Don is a planner with Kotler and Herring. He's been around for, I think, 32 years, I read. Don's going to tell you a little bit more about his background, but we're going to offer Don's testimony tonight, and he's going to offer his views on the benefits of this project to Riviera Beach and try to answer any questions you may have about the planning aspects of this property. And finally, I'm going to have, anchoring the team speaking group is going to be Mandel Sundarasing. And Mandel is the general counsel for the Wellness Group, the actually the Creative Choice Group, who is the backbone of the thing. And Mandel's going to kind of anchor this and give you a perspective from the owner's point of view. And with that, I'm going to ask that we take a minute and look at a video before Jim comes up. Should I just press, this is going to work? This video was shown at the public meeting on Slinger Island when we had it at the property,
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, my name is Jim Brown. I'm the developer of this project. My background in real estate in Florida goes back to 1971 when I moved here. We started a real estate company at one point. We had three offices, one of which was over here on the island. The biggest project I've been involved in was St. Lucie West, a 4,600-acre new town that was approved for 18,000 dwelling units, 15 million square feet of industrial, commercial, and retail space, two universities, the MedSpring training, I-95 interchange, Turnpike Overpass. We built all of that in a two-year period. The video you just saw, or as you can see... The video you just saw, or as you can see, as you saw, the wellness resorts and spas and signature project, one where you can all be proud that you had some hand in bringing it to fruition. I too am proud to be part of it, especially from the perspective of having been involved with total Amarin, with the initial Amarin project almost ten years ago. The plan before you today is the same very unique concept that we have refined to bring the community something even better. As part of that earlier plan approved in 2004 and still valid, we contributed $570,000 to the minority employment and affordable housing opportunity program known as MEEHOP, in addition to $100,000 to the Blue Heron Singer Island beautification program. When we decided not to move forward, we left that money with the city. We had eighty contracts with hard deposits when the market turned and rather than go ahead and force buyers to close, many of whom now have financial constraints and would have forfeited their deposits, we returned all deposits 100% plus interest, which the banks were then paying. All others with our zoning that went ahead did not succeed and were forced to change owners. We are now ready to move ahead again with a better, more modern design. It's been a long and continuing effort by the landowner, who's been involved with Riviera Beach since 1984 and purchased the property in 1995, spending almost nine years to clean up the title problems caused by the failed timeshare program that had over 2,000 owners scattered around the world. My own history on site actually predates the current owners. It was at the former Commander Restaurant that my wife of now almost forty years and I had our first meal together. Because of the commitments we have made to the community from the beginning, we believe this project can be a success for all of us. After spending almost a decade on the timeshares, then riding out the storm that was the economic crash a few years ago, we hope this patience has paid off. We have been in Riviera Beach for a long time and plan to stay here for many more years. We are not here to build, sell, and then leave. We will retain ownership and operate the hotel, spa, wellness center, and other amenities as the luxury destination resort. This will allow us to ensure that the quality and commitment we show to you today is not sold off to a third party that may not have the same commitment to the community or the quality that we are presenting to you. Some of the key metrics of our current proposal are: We have grown by about half an acre to a total site of about 7.106 acres. We have a total of 359 units, 150 resort hotel rooms, and 209 resort hotel suites. The crux of wellness resort and spa's concept is its 30,000 square feet of indoor spa and wellness facilities, including personalized training, nutritional guidance, stress management, sleep optimization, and other preventative lifestyle measures to enhance the quality of life and longevity. Our other amenities include multiple food and beverage outlets, retail, fitness center, and ballroom. An additional benefit from the resort operations is those facilities will be available to everyone. The spa, wellness center, health club, three restaurants, and ballroom will offer experiences not currently available in this area. This is a one-of-a-kind project and it will be widely acclaimed, attract new visitors, and will add to the city of Riviera Beach's reputation as a growing and dynamic waterfront community. Because of the continuing resort operations, we will create many local jobs in addition to the 3,000-plus during construction. Continuing operations will create over 600 local jobs, over 400 of which will be on-site. Were we to simply build, sell, and turn operations over to owner associations, the residual jobs would be less than 5% of that total. To ensure that those jobs are filled by local people, we are already working to establish a job creation institute with assistance from community leaders here in Riviera Beach, as well as the state. We are very proud of our current plans, which we feel are a major improvement. As staff outlined, our zoning and proposed use is consistent with the resort hotel RA zoning district. Allowing for our variances, we are consistent with all zoning use regulations. Our density allows for eighty hotel rooms, or forty hotel suites, or twenty condominiums per acre. Our proposed unit mix is for 150 hotel rooms and 209 hotel suites. The height limit is twenty stories or 220 feet, including ornamental mechanical elements. Our building is consistent with this requirement. Our setbacks are also consistent with the code. The floor area ratio limits the interior spaces to two times the area of the lot, and we are consistent with the code. The parking code requires 484 spaces, including handicap accessible, but without taking advantage of the 20% reduction allowed by MEEHOP, we still exceed that requirement with a total of 607 parking spaces. As staff specified, we are consistent with the comprehensive plan, the levels of service requirements, the landscape code, and traffic requirements. Our traffic study was approved and verified again by Palm Beach County. While the buildings are consistent with all planning and zoning elements, they are far more attractive and reflect current, rather than ten-year-old, design concepts. We have also met with our neighbors and the community to understand what they would like to see and how we can turn the current eyesore into an asset for the community. Those of you that read the public meeting on site heard a letter of support read by one of Tiara's board of directors. Ms. Dixon could not attend today, but here's the video.
... Julie Motel, who has been working with the people from Wellness Resort as chair of a committee of owners at the Tiara, and she could not be here, but is asking me to read a letter from her, which says, "I'm an owner of the Tiara building at 3,000 North Ocean Drive on Singer Island. I am supporting the Wellness Resort project to be built at 3100 North Ocean Drive. We refer to this project as the Amarin. When we first learned that a new building was to be constructed to our north, we naturally became curious about the location, size, and design of the proposed project. Naturally, one of our primary concerns was the environmental impact of a building that was to extend to the 1979 coastal construction control line, the CCL. Many of our owners of residence, approximately 185 in residence at the time out of 300 of us, signed a petition, 185 signed petitions, that was presented to Riviera Beach City Council, asking that the city adopt the 1997 CCL. Many of us attended city council meetings to express our concerns. We then reached out to the Amarin developers and began a series of conversations with them. Through our meetings and discussions, we were informed as the Amarin developers to move the building westward, seven to 10 feet from the 1979 CCL. The Amarin team has also assured us that there will not be any negative impact on the dunes as a result of their construction. They received approval in 2006 from the Florida Department of Environmental Protection that concluded the following, quote, "The activities are such in nature that they will result in no significant adverse impact to the beach dune areas or to adjacent properties, that the work is not expected to adversely affect nesting sea turtles, their hatchlings, or their habitat," unquote. We were also naturally concerned about the ocean views from our northern units in the Tiara. As a concession to Tiara owners, the Amarin developers agreed to rotate the eastern building to the north so as to increase the separation between the proposed building and Tiara's existing building from 194 feet to 244 feet. This move will improve the views from our northern units. Tiara owners were also concerned about the noise that might emanate from the resort, having suffered from the often intense volumes that routinely come from America to our north. The Amarin developers have assured us that they will limit the noise emanating from outdoor activities, such that Tiara residents are not exposed to excessively loud sounds. Many of our owners who live on the north side of the Tiara were worried that the proposed service entrance on the Amarin property would result in noisy deliveries with exhaust fumes rising into their units. The Amarin developer agreed to terminate the service entrance, which accesses the loading dock, so that the route terminates no further east than the western limit of facade of the Tiara, thus ensuring that the noise and truck fumes do not reach our units. All of the concessions agreed upon by the Amarin team and the Tiara owners were codified in an agreement which was signed by our board president. One of the concerns we now have is that the Amarin developers might be forced to return to their original plan, which would allow them to build up to the 1979 CCL. The old plan would be more detrimental to the environment than the current plan, which may have agreed to move up to 10 feet westward on the 79 line. In addition, the older plan is much denser than the new plan and would accommodate more residents, which would create additional traffic. Since the old plan calls for the building to be much closer to the Tiara, it would negatively impact approximately 100 of our units. Therefore, I'm in full support of the Amarin amended site plan and would urge the city to move quickly to approve this plan so that the Amarin developers are not forced to build an older, more dense project that would be built up to the 1979 CCL. Sincerely, Julie Motel." I would just like to add, it was stressful, but in the end, I think, I know that they have really proved to be honored and faithful, who have kept their word in every step of the way, and I think that they will be excellent leaders for us on Singer Island. Thank you.
With regard to that 1979 CCCL, the city council exempted us from the moratorium last summer when they recognized that we submitted an application prior to initial city discussion on amending property development standards, including amendments to the ocean setback line. Those of you that were present in the early discussions might recall that staff originally proposed only the northern section of the island be so restricted, so our property was not initially to be subject to the new ordinance. City council has recognized regarding the 1979 CCCL that the project is consistent with the development regulations existing at the time of applications submitted in March 2014. Our beach has grown about 75 feet over the last decade, putting over 350 feet between the easternmost structure and the mean high waterline. Alternatively, we are left with the old site plan. City and staff has confirmed that our plans and variances approved earlier are active. If you recall, the blue project down the street from us was just approved with their variances, which were also from 2004. We are taking what was improved and improving. We have a smaller building, greater separation, and more amenities, so we had no option but to go up on our western tower while still retaining, remaining consistent within the limits established by the RA zoning code. Additionally, we are going extra mile to ensure that jobs remain local. As previously mentioned, we are working with community leaders to implement a job creation institute that proactively trains people from this community to still them. That effort has already begun, some two and a half to three years before our doors will be opened. It's an exciting project. I'm proud to be a part of it. I'd like to introduce Mr. Don Delaney of Strategic Development Initiatives, who will discuss the financial aspects of what we are planning.
Members of the public, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, my colleagues with this group. My name is Don Delaney. I'm going to introduce myself through my professional experience. I've worked for two Florida governors, US Senator and Florida Governor Bob Graham and former US Senator and Florida Governor Loughton Charles, authored and implemented economic policies, redevelopment strategies for local governments, tenure redevelopment agencies. Got more than 30 years' experience in the field of economics, land use, finance, and redevelopment. Been appointed to serve the State of Florida Enterprise Zone Development Board, been an economic consultant, advisor to cities, counties, and community development agencies across Florida. In fact, Mr. Chairman, this is only the third time I've ever represented a private group. My work has been exclusively for the past several decades on that side of the table. I think we might have a project here that warrants whatever effort I can put forth here. And I'm a court-recognized expert witness in the area of public finance, bond validation, eminent domain land use, and community redevelopment. First one, please. My responsibility here tonight is to put a real dollar figure in as clear a way as I can to explain the economic impact of this project. Currently, the city receives about $53,000 a year in ad valorem taxes for this property. That's it. Once developed, this property will be paying the city an additional $3.17 million a year in property taxes. In addition, during the development phase, this project will generate another $3.2 million directly to the city for development fees, impact fees, and all the normal fees that come along with a developer's responsibility to carry out a project. So, based on city code, city fee schedule, your tax rate, just during the development phase alone, this project generates about $6.4 million directly to the city during the three years it will take to build it and get it on the roll. $6.4 million versus the city receiving about $160,000. Now, let's look forward. The project is up and going. Economists don't like to look more than 10 years out, so we'll look just 10 years out, just paying the property taxes that we know that they're going to need to pay based on your current military. The city will collect another $31.7 million in ad valorem revenues as opposed to half a million if the site cannot move forward. So just during the development phase, while it's being built and it first goes on the tax hole, and the 10 years looking forward, which is a reasonable horizon, the city will generate an additional $38 million to care the responsibilities and the citizens and the needs of this community. And I will tell you, as a public economist, that's a large enough number to help relieve some of the pressure that local elected officials have in trying to provide the services for the community without having to raise the tax rate. These are significant numbers. In addition, I want everyone here to know that in the 10-year projection going forward, I did not value any growth rate in the value of this property at all. I picked a 0% annual growth rate. I would tell you, with the economy moving in the direction that it is, and real estate values coming back, and overall economic expansion moving forward, slow but steady, there will be an appreciation. But I have a tendency to do numbers very conservative, so if it doesn't appreciate a dime, the city still generates an extra $38 million. A little red tag on the bottom here, sometime when the city comes in, sometime when a development entity comes in, they say, "We're going to do this, we're going to create these jobs, we're going to create this tax value. Can you help us defer impact fees? Can you allow us to use part of the taxes we pay to pay for some roads or some turns?" Or nothing, this developer's asking for zero. Let's look at jobs and economic impact. During the development phase, and these are temporary jobs, these are just during the development phase, based on the development program, in excess of 3,000 jobs will be created. 3,035, according to US Department of Commerce Regional Impact Metric Calculator, so I didn't create a formula, these are the best business practices, best economic practices that are commonly used and fully defensible. Over 3,000 jobs during this development phase period. And if you took those 3,000 jobs and said that was a rock and you're going to throw it in an economic pond and see the ripple, that's $161 million to the area economy. Let's focus that down even more narrow. Let's bring that home. Once the project is open, the economic impact for permanent jobs, permanent jobs, 659. But more importantly, to me, is the 442 jobs that are on-site. More importantly to me than the $43 million... More importantly to me than the $43 million in just the local area economy from the 659 jobs is the $25 million a year in expanded payroll economic ripple of the 442 people who are going to work there. And more important to me is the fact that this developer has been reaching out to the community multiple years ahead of it being, the project being finished, is continuing to reach out to the community. And I would charge each of you as active citizens, community leaders, to be involved in their jobs initiative, and let's keep those jobs right here. What you find, what you find in business is that the people are local and are served local and are part of it, you have better, happier employees. That money is also magnified when it stays home, if it comes home down the paycheck. That's my report on the economic impact.
Mr. Chairman, board members, Larry Smith again. I'm going to address some of Jeff's comments, staff comments, because we wanted you to see the program, we wanted you to see the economic impact, the positive sides of this job, see what kind of many benefits that the project is going to bring to Riviera Beach. And unfortunately, staff has not been able to recommend approval to you. And I'm disappointed with that, but I think we need to talk about it because they're saying that there's a condition in the zoning board of adjustment variance approval in 2004 that says we have to be substantially consistent with that old plan. I'd like to show you exactly what the condition was. This is right, about a week and a half ago, I was looking at the minutes of the meeting, which are not nearly as complete as the verbatim transcript, which was included in your staff report. The first time I saw this was in the staff report. But it underscored my earlier review of the minutes and what was brought to my attention in the minutes. And that is that staff proposed the condition that Jeff showed you with the S or no S, and I think one of the board members was questioning that, but this is the staff representative presenting to the zoning board of adjustment, Scott Evans. Scott's a senior planner with the CRA now, and he was a senior planner with the Community Development Recu Department, and 10 years ago, he was the one making the presentation to the zoning board of adjustment. This is right out of your transcript, right out of the package that was part of your staff report. And what Scott said at the conclusion of his presentation is, "Staff recommends that the board consider having the following condition if they vote for approval." Well, if you skip to the part where the board votes for approval, and I'm not going to show you that because it runs on for a number of pages, but it starts on page 59 and runs to page 66. If you look at the transcript, the verbatim transcript, you can see that when the item came back to the board for deliberation, Cora Perry was the chairman, chairperson at the time, and Ms. Perry came back to the board, Ms. Perry said, "What does the board want to do?" The city, Assistant City Attorney was guiding the board through the approval process, and what they did was they took each variance, one by one, and they approved the first variance, which was one of the dimensional variances that we're relying on. They approved the second variance, which was the other dimensional variance that we're relying on, and then they approved the third variance, which was the height variance that we're not relying on. So, we're looking at the first two variances, and it's underscored, what I saw in the minutes, the verbatim transcript, is it's clear that the board, when they made the motions and approved the variances, didn't incorporate staff's condition. And notwithstanding the fact that it's our position, and we're preserving that position for the record, that there is no condition on those variances, and we get to use the variances because they run with the land, I don't mind justifying this project and showing you how it's substantially consistent with the 2004 project. And the reason I don't mind is because it's consistent in almost every facet. Now, Jeff has pointed out my staff has their position, and I respect that. We've worked well with staff through the whole project, almost two years now, and it's unfortunate that we can't agree, but this is really the only thing we don't agree on. Everything else, I believe that the staff is, says, "This is, this project is fine for Riviera Beach, this is a great project for Riviera Beach. We think the other project was a good project, the 2004 project, we think this is a better project for Riviera Beach." So, I'm going to ask Don, oh, I want to show you something before I ask Don Herring to come up, I want to show you how I had approached the substantially consistent issue. And this is, this comes out of a letter I wrote Pam Ryan, your city attorney, back in February, because I was also struggling with substantially consistent. And so, I went to the Black's Law Dictionary. You know, when we're trying to do legal research, we lawyers go to the Black's Law Dictionary. If we can't find any cases on it, and this is what Black's Law Dictionary says. Consistent is having agreement with itself or something else accordant, harmonious, congruous, compatible, pliable, not contradictory, and substantially means essentially without material qualification, in the main, in substance, materially, substantial manner, about, actually, competently, and essentially. Now, staff went to the Webster's Dictionary, which I'm okay with that, that's fine. It's a different source, and they came up with the Webster's Dictionary, but then they jumped to their own interpretation of what the Webster's Dictionary says. Here's what they say. "Largely similar." I can live with that. I can live with that. That matches up to this, it matches up to the Webster's Dictionary. What I can't live with, and what I think is inappropriate and the most restrictive interpretation of even the Webster's Dictionary definition, is that it has to be almost identical. I just don't think that's true, and I don't think the law requires it. So, if we had a condition, which I maintain that we don't, I'm going to ask Don Herring to come up and tell you how these two projects are substantially consistent, because I want, I want to demonstrate to you that they are substantially consistent, and if there were a condition, that we need that condition.
Good evening. For the record, Mr. Chair, board members, my name is Donaldson Herring. I'm the planner and landscape architect with the firm of Cottler &amp; Herring. I'm the managing partner of the firm, and we've been practicing here in Palm Beach County for 30 years, assert myself individually, and as Cottler &amp; Herring for now 25 years, this is our 25th anniversary. I am an expert in the area of land use planning and zoning entitlement, and appear before boards like this probably two or three times a week, and have done that for the past 30 years routinely. Provide expert testimony on the subject of compatibility, you know, and consistency, and I know that those can often be difficult terms to deal with, and we deal with your comprehensive plan. In fact, I'm pleased to see that your staff has confirmed that this project is fully consistent with your comprehensive plan. And many of you who have been dealing with the comprehensive plan for many, many years realize this, in looking at the comprehensive plan itself, often you'll have a project that's largely consistent with the majority of the policies of a plan, but might not be totally consistent with one specific provision of a plan. That particular project is substantially consistent with your comprehensive plan, and you typically make those determinations. Larry did provide you with the Black's Dictionary, and in our opinion, the project that we have is really compatible, pliable, and certainly not contradictory with that zoning board of appeals approval. And I'll go through kind of how I come to that conclusion, you know, in a moment, but it is important to go back and just recall what staff was telling you earlier. There were three variances, and in every single case, the project that is before you today reduces the extent of the variances. We're not increasing it. One variance was totally eliminated. The other two variances, in dealing with the length of the building, basically the length in an east-west direction, was significantly modified. The previously granted variance was over 300 feet in length, when your code, I believe, said 200 feet, so it was one and a half times your code. We significantly reduced the extent of that variance by about 97 feet. So, we're more consistent. I think that that's pretty clear. The second variance, which is dealing with the width, your width would be in a north-south direction, was also reduced. So, we reduced two, the extent of two variances and eliminated one. So, we're more consistent with the provisions of your code. So, one of the things that we looked at, the items that we evaluated are up there on the screen, and I'll run through each one of them as we go through them. First, in looking at your codes, we look at the floor area ratio, they're the same. We look at the density, it's the same. The use, the use is the same. The intent and the design of the building, very much the same. Of course, the old building was 10 years ago, a lot has happened in 10 years. We didn't have an iPad 10 years ago, so the new building is more forward-leaning, but we maintain the same curvilinear and architectural elements. Of course, we're consistent with the land development regulations utilizing the variance as well as your comprehensive plan. Relative to the building itself, the previous building was two buildings, and one could argue that it could have been determined to be one, but it was two buildings, the proposed building is two buildings. The previous building had kind of a slant to the way it was oriented or articulated onto the property. The new building does the same. The old building had two levels of parking, the new one does. The pool's the same, the driveway connections are the same, the main lobby's the same, the service area's the same, and the total building height is absolutely the same. Good. But there were also many, many improvements, and I think that that's important to point out. I think you heard it when you heard from our neighbors. Of course, I think everyone recognizes that the existing site plan could be built tomorrow, but you heard it from those that are impacted the most, our neighbors, the ones that you would have us go out and talk to. And we heard our neighbors say, "The old plan is more detrimental to the environment. The old plan is more intense, more denser. The old plan is more impactful." So, the applicant spent a lot of time working with your staff, working with the neighbors to develop a plan which is better. And one of the commissioners, I believe, asked the question, and I thought it was a very astute question, does, is the new plan in any way injurious to the city? And the simple answer to that is, it can't be. Staff has already made a determination that it's consistent with your comprehensive plan, and in fact, if it were injurious to anyone within the city, it would be considered inconsistent with your comprehensive plan. In fact, we rotated the building to maximize views, spent a lot of time looking at shade studies, as you had seen by staff, reduced the length of the building from 307 feet, reduced it by about 96 feet, and moved the building back further from that 1997 line. The building footprints have been substantially reduced, so there's more green space on the property than was there before. And even the setbacks, it's important to understand the setbacks, because there was some discussion about the setback for motion code. The setbacks meet the requirements of the code. In fact, we're further back, 112 feet was the original plan, and we're proposing 136 feet. So, there's significant improvements that have occurred. So, the old design was a good design, we heard it was a superior design, but the proposed design is exemplary. It's a great design, it's much better, it's forward-leaning, it's a sleeker building, and it is, in our opinion, substantially consistent, and it is, in our opinion, largely similar. And with that, I thank you, and we'll let the next person speak.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, honorable members of the board. My name is Mandelson Darsing, and I am general counsel for the Wellness Resort Developer. Brief background about me, I have been practicing law since 2008. I have been a resident of South Florida for all of my life. Attended high school at John Allen High School, went to undergrad at Florida Atlantic University, and I attended law school at Middle West Southeastern University in Fort Lauderdale. I apologize for my voice tonight, a little bit under the weather, both literally and figuratively speaking. Tonight, we are asking the board to vote in favor of recommending our amended site plan. We are not asking for any increase in density, or not asking for any increase in overall height or FAR, or to approve similar structural changes. As the staff report says, we are consistent with applicable zoning codes, density requirements, and height requirements. If we do not get approval for the amended site plan, then we will be forced to build the old one. The new site plan is superior, and everyone in this room should agree that the new plan is superior. The improved site plan is closer to the 1997 coastal construction control line than the old one does, and it does not build up to the 1979 line like the old one is entitled to. More jobs are created as a result of the new design for local citizens. The new design generates more tax revenue to the city, more amenities for the public to use, it will enhance the value of our neighbors' properties, and we have the support of Tiara to the south. No one in this room should argue that the old site plan is better. The amended site plan is more desirable in every way. We appreciate staff's comments and efforts to serve the city, but we don't believe that they use the proper definition of substantially consistent, nor do we, nor do we agree that the condition applies to us. If the board is still inclined to consider the staff's requirement of substantially consistent, then our decision is that we are, and the board must find that we are substantially consistent. You've heard Larry Smith's argument about which definition should be used. You've all, what I want to share with you at this point is the additional consideration of legislative intent. And the reason that's important is because when a legislative body gives you a term that is not defined in the legislative code, then there are two secondary sources that we look to in order to ascertain what the definition should be. The first can be your dictionary definition, which we've discussed earlier. The second, which I think the board recognizes already from what I've heard tonight, is the concept of legislative intent. In other words, when the condition, whether we agree with it or not, was placed, was placed into the resolution, what was the intent of it? We can all agree that the legislative intent behind using that term must be to prevent a less desirable product from being built, not a more desirable product. What we've done here is taken the old site plan and refined it in such a way to enhance the value of the product for the benefit of the people of Riviera Beach. Surely, the legislative intent to promote the maximum welfare of its citizens must be taken into account when attempting to place a definition on a term used by a legislative body, in this case, staff. When you put these two things together, the dictionary definition and the legislative intent, you will find that the amended site plan is substantially consistent with the previous one. It is a better product all around. Another way to look at it is to say, you take the dictionary definition of the term, and you shine a light of legislative intent on that definition. When you do that, you'll reach the same conclusion. I know that everyone in this room, including the board, the staff, the citizens of Riviera Beach, and the team behind the Amrit project, we all wake up each morning wanting to do something good for the people of Riviera Beach. However, it is not every day that we are given the opportunity to actually do it and to leave a positive, lasting legacy in our community. Health, wellness, yoga, meditation, these are just some of the positive things that the Amrit team would like to share with their community and their neighbors. There's nothing else like this project in the state of Florida. I think that today, we can all take a step forward together towards doing something special and unique for the people of Riviera Beach, and I ask you to vote in favor of our amended site plan so that we can do that together.
Mr. Chairman, Larry Smith again for the record. That concludes the applicant's presentation. We appreciate your time, and I'll echo Mandelson's recognition. We appreciate your time, and I'll echo Mandel's request. We would ask you to approve this application. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Gagnon, do you have any comments before we start public?
Mr. Chair, just a second.
Yeah, I think I'd prefer, well, actually, I'll respond to a few different things now. I was going to wait until after public comments, but I think it'd be best to respond to specific comments prior to public comments, just to clarify a few items. So, there was a lot of information provided to the Board and to the general public. However, in my opinion, a lot is not relevant. So, the economic impact unfortunately is not relevant to whether or not this project is substantially consistent. The fact that the project remains consistent with the comprehensive plan does not make that determination for the Board. If, in fact, the project was not consistent with the comprehensive plan, it wouldn't be before you. So, there's information that's been provided that is not as relevant or pertinent as others might want you to think it is or believe it is. Additionally, I want to make the point that the zoning board of adjustment is a semi-division board, meaning that they make a final ruling on an item, and it is a final ruling. Beyond that, it would go to court to overrule or overturn that ruling. The development team so far has stated multiple times that the new design is 10 years advanced from the old design. That very well may be the case, may be the point. However, what was presented to that decision-making board 10 years previous? If a project was presented to the planning zoning board, and you had the intent of a certain site plan, if it was modified even slightly, how would you feel? So, that's what I'll say to this point. Maybe it's best for public comments now.
Thank you. Ms. McCoy, you have something to say?
Are we going to be permitted to ask questions of the applicant?
Yeah, I think let's listen to the public comments first, okay? And then we'll open it up to either staff and the applicant. We have about 15 public comments, so that's going to take a little bit of time. In the interest of time, what I'd like to suggest is that if you certainly have the right to come up and speak, however, if you're with the same group and have the same views, you can just come up and give your name and say you support that particular speaker. But, I just want to assure you that you do have the right to get up and make your comments. First, I'm going to read two names at a time so that, in the interest of time, we can speed it up.
Good evening. Lynn Hubbard, 1405 West 23rd Street, Riviera Beach. I'm coming for you based on what I've heard about the zoning board of adjustments intent. I happen to have been sitting on that board at this time. When this project came back around, I was able to get all of the public comments, the minutes, as well as our time. As one of the presenters said before me, we voted on each thing individually. The Board did, the staff did ask us to put a condition on it, but if you look in the minutes on each one, never did we put the condition on that. Now, if you turn to your minutes and you look at the third one, it specifically states that this, number three, the final and last one, those are the words that are used, the final and the last one, the condition was never voted on. We, if you read each one, Ms. Perry read each one, we voted on it as that. We did not take staff's recommendation to put the condition on the variances that were approved. Now, if you go over to the last, go over to the last page where the condition was, you'll never find that condition in the minutes, in the verbatim minutes. Why? Because we never voted on that condition. That wasn't our intent. But, what you will find in the minutes is this. Ms. Robinson, you live with Ms. Robinson, sat up there at the time, and she said, "We want to move forward," and that we didn't find anything wrong and objective to this particular project. So, there was nothing, we didn't want to put anything that would constrain them, because we were well aware that this was a sketch. This was more of a pencil sketch, and they would come back with something more concrete. And, what I see so far is that they have gone out of their way to be consistent. They moved over 100 feet now from the Tierra, and the only way you can go is you give the Tierra that much space is up, but yet, they didn't ask for anything extra. They're still within the 20-feet code. So, it's like, you can't tell every, the lot is the lot. They have a long, narrow lot. You can't tell all women, whatever your size is, you need to wear the same-sized dress. We have to put on a style and a size that complements your body, and I think that's what they have done to that particular lot. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hubbard. Ms. Davis?
Good evening. My name is Marie Davis. I'm here on behalf of my husband, Zell Davis, and I'm a resident in Riviera Beach, 3001 Lake Drive. As you already know, I'm a strong proponent of a strong zoning code, because I believe it's the cornerstone of a successful and vibrant city. I'm also an advocate of private property rights versus the government encroachment into our lives. Business and tourism, it can be the lifeblood of a community, but there has to be a balance between the rights of the residents who live in that community every day and the business and tourism interests of that same community. That translates into responsible development and growth that will preserve the unique quality of Riviera Beach as a small town that brings good jobs to our area, such as a new working waterfront at the Marina, the Ocean Mall, and that property's being redeveloped. Everyone knows, including developers from all over the country, that Riviera Beach is a sleeping giant because of its location 20 to 30 minutes to the intercoastal waterway, the interstate highway, the Port of Palm Beach, the beautiful beaches, and world-class restaurants and shopping. I'm proud to live here in Riviera Beach, and, as many of you know, my husband grew up here. His family were amongst the early settlers. His uncle was mayor, and their family built many businesses in the city, including a local community bank, movie theater, and various buildings. If the recent history predicts the future, we can all look around at the oceanfront buildings on Singer Island. They are massive and in-your-face, built too close to the roadway. The Westerly Building of this proposal is directly parallel to Ocean Drive, and it's about one-half the width of Marina Grand. The Eastern Building in this proposal is approximately the same size of the Marina Grand Building, which is a constant reminder that bigger is not always better. It might sound like big money at the time, quantity over quality, but that reduces the quality of life for all the residents and the value of our city. We have an opportunity to see Riviera Beach rise to that shining star it can be. This is a same project that's been dormant for 10 years with the same owner. We want development on Singer Island, pleasing to the residents, aesthetically pleasing, not massive, not this proposal. This is a real estate project that may have restaurants, may have a ballroom, it may have a conference center and a wellness center, and it may bring jobs, but there are no guarantees. It is a lifestyle that's presented. None of these amenities are in stone. More importantly, it's become too massive, and there's no similarity to the original building plans, which had much more character than the current plan. I respectfully urge you to postpone this project and for further input and study and comments by the residents. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Ms. Lindblom and Judge Rogers.
Good evening. Frogger Lindblom, 1201 North Harbor Drive, Riviera Beach. I live in the Anheuser States, and the wellness center is, the smaller parcel is part of our subdivision. And, to date, even though I'm seeing the original plans, I've seen the new plans, I really don't know how it's going to affect my neighborhood. And, I myself was very interested in the substantially inconsistent phrase, and so I was curious. I went online, like all of us do these days, and I tried to find someplace in the United States that used that term. And, the only thing I came across was substantial conformance, and that was widely used throughout the state of California. We know that California has the largest coastline, it has such a varied demographics to its whole state, and so, they do comment on what is allowed once an approved plan has been passed. And, I strongly urge you to maybe look at that, because it does talk about when you have an approved plan as what is allowed, then, as what is consistent, changes. And, I think you maybe should defer. This packet is 500 pages long. I've been reading it all week since it came out, and I still can't find some of the things that some of the people have talked about. So, I really encourage you to look at some other cities that use that terminology, find out if it applies. I understand our code is silent on the actual description for that terminology, but right now, I don't know where I stand. I can tell you that I do like the original tenure plan better. I think it is aesthetically pleasing as far as that tiered-level look versus the box look that, and I'm not saying the box look is not pleasing, it's just massive. So, I hope that you would consider deferring tonight's vote. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Edward Rogers, and I've been in Riviera Beach for about 50 years now. I used to sit up there where all of you are sitting in your inconsistent plan.
Mr. Chair, can you ask the speaker to come to the microphone?
Yeah. Could you speak into the microphone? And just identify yourself and your address. We all know you, but...
My name's Edward Rogers, and I have to preface this with a statement. I'm here, I live in Genoa Beach now in a retired senior citizen's building, but I lived in Riviera Beach for over 50 years. I live on Singer Island, 1170 Bimby Main. I now live at 806 Universal Boulevard, Waterford, Senior Citizen Program. And, I was saying, you know, the matter of inconsistency, we have to use common sense, even with regards to what the law says. You have to observe the law, but sometimes, there is no answer. So, you have to use what makes sense to you. You have a very powerful job you have, and unfortunately, in Riviera Beach, we've not used the power that we have. Your job is to make the city a good place to live for the people who live here. That's your responsibility, and it's a very solemn responsibility that you should give the utmost consideration to. Now, what they're saying here is that they have the difference, but just like I said before, we had a bench there that was a straight line all the way down, and in order for someone to talk from that end to the other end, they had to lean forward and look down the bench. And, finally, somebody said, "This doesn't make sense. You know, let's have a bench curved out so everybody can see everybody talking." So, I'm appearing basically as a social engineer. It's your job to improve the living conditions for the people in Riviera Beach. And, as Ms. Davis says, of course, you're considering whether or not it is creating a hardship on the people living here, you should consider that. But, in this case, it appears as though there's nothing but good coming out of what they've asked for. And, I was a member of the group when they decided 10 years ago to put up a hotel in that vacant space. And, to change the hotels, this system, or whatever they're doing, is going to give you close to $100 million. You know, I'm reminded of the doctor's old statement, the most thing, first thing you do as a surgeon for the patient is try to do no harm. So, if you're going to change something to give me a better situation, then my feeling would be that I'd like to see you change it. And, we certainly haven't had good luck. You know, this is the same city when I first came here. They gave away the whole Singer Island stores down there to a couple of relatives for $30,000 a year and didn't have to pay any taxes. And, we suffered under that for years and years and years. And, today, we see that the developers come in here and say they're going to do this, that, and the other, and I end up seeing school buses riding people who don't live here and who are obviously immigrants from another country or somewhere, coming here doing all the work and getting all the jobs. I don't want to see that anymore. I think we need to deal with people of integrity, and that's why I'm interested in what goes on here. I think we consider integrity first, and then, amount of money we're making maybe next. But, certainly, I'm here to support that we have put the plan to change. It's going to do nothing but good for us. Thank you.
Thank you. The next two speakers will be Lee Canoah and Arthur Anderson. Lee Canoah, Arthur Anderson.
Good evening, the Board members. I'm pleased to have this opportunity to come before you this evening. The judge took away my comments in part in that, you know, being a former administrator and distinguished professor at Florida at a university for some 20-plus years, I think we had a marvelous academic exercise on basically what's consistent and what's inconsistent. So, as the judge indicated, I think we have to move beyond that discussion, because I believe that there are some common interests to be served relative to if you've previously supported this project or if you have not in the past. You can't find a better organization than the Creative Choice Group to be involved as your business partner. They've been here for many years and have made tremendous contributions to this community. Moving forward, though, I think ultimately, what we have to do is decide what's going to be in the best interest of the total community. And, I believe that when we looked at this project and the benefits, we've heard about the economic impact that's to be anticipated. I think we can count on that, because there was an individual, independent reviewer that came up with those findings, as well as the employment opportunities. But, I think we have to consider, for one, the beautification of the island and the city, which should be of prime importance as well. We know that there will be an economic driver as well for the city in terms of being able to stimulate a new industry, being the tourism, hotel, and wellness industry. In addition to that, there will be major developments in the county along these lines that this community will be able to tap into and benefit from also. There should be an improvement of the quality of life for residents and have a healthier community as well. We also want to look at programs for residents and city employees that can benefit from the wellness resort and spa, because the intent of the developer is to be able to carry programs out... out to the community also. In terms of job training, I think that's something that we want to place a high emphasis upon, and the developers plan to develop a job training institute here in the city. And thinking in terms that that would be best located in the CRA district. We've had discussions with the CRA director, has indicated that possibly there will be opportunities that if there's a planted lappedated building in the CRA district, that if the organization would rehab one of these buildings, that funds may develop. Initially, the focus would be on the hotel and wellness preparation for employment. However, as various specialty areas such as technology or lighting would be identified, and those areas could be included as well. Just finally, further delay would tend to maybe greatly emphasize the lack of success of the other project. We need to move forward now and consider as well that the developer has already invested, I think, about $400,000 in these related efforts. So please give that your utmost consideration and approve the project this evening.
Thank you. The next two speakers, James Green and Michael Slusser. Michael Slusser and William Compton. Please identify yourself and name and address.
Good evening. My name is Michael Slusser, live at 4100 North Ocean Drive, Riviera Beach. I came tonight because of an interest I have to two organizations that I'm involved in. I'm president of COSI, which is the Community Officers Association of Singer Island. In that role, the concern I have consists of the change of plans that we've seen. I want to believe in a project like this. I've been invited to come down and see what their plans are. I've seen their presentations. I'm a marketing guy. They have split marketing, and split marketing can sell you just about anything if it's really good. My problem is that what started off as an except, as a nice-looking project, has turned into two large buildings. And if there's one thing Singer Island really doesn't need, it's two more large buildings on the island. Now, as a taxpayer, I listen to the economic impact, and I got it as a taxpayer, I want to believe in the project because eventually that may reduce my taxes. As an individual who cares about the future of Singer Island and the future of global warming and what will happen to Singer Island, my concern is where we place any new project that comes in. I serve on the board, protect our beaches. I believe very strongly that when we agreed to move that 90, to go to the 97 line from the 79 line, it's for a reason. The reason is that the ocean will slowly but surely take its toll on Singer Island. I may not be here to see the results, but some of you will. And the question is, do we have a moral obligation to enforce something like that? I personally believe we do. I believe that because I spend too much time looking at the economic impact of global warming, rising seas, and the way our beaches are being diminished. So there is a concern on that part. As far as the other possibilities, I want to believe all those jobs will come to our residents. I want to believe that this will actually do and provide benefits for people that it says it will do. And I hope it will, but there was a line, trust but verify, and I'm left thinking, how do we know that to be true? I don't have that answer. But I do believe that what we've seen tonight from staff and other conversations, it would be wise for us to take a pause and look at this in context of the original plan versus what they're proposing tonight. And I thank you.
Good evening. My name is Bill Compton. I've lived in Riviera Beach for over 35 years. I've been a lawyer for almost 40 years. I was here when this project came before the city council and the Plains Board back in 2004. It was contentious. It was contentious because it was a massive building, and this project got variances because frankly, it was such a massive size of a massive building, and they got massive variances. And the condition on that variance, as you see, even though there's some talk about it, is simply the project needed to substantially comply. It was also supposed to begin in 18 months, and that has sort of been roughed over because of unfortunately, some of the defects in our municipal code, this project sat there dormant. And as you see, it's been 11 years and nothing's happened. Now we're presented with a totally different plan, and I just wanted to point out some things that you've been told that this is, this project, they moved the coastal construction line. And frankly, that's my big concern because the coastal construction line does two things. It protects us all from the buildings coming back and saying, help us, when they get covered up by water, and it also protects our right to the public beach. And I'm a big fan of that. I was involved in the referendum, fighting for the public beach. I was involved fighting for Ocean Mall. I was involved in litigation against these kind of developers that have tried to take advantage of our city and our codes. Now, let's be clear here, what they're asking you to do would not comply now with our codes. They would have to come back. If they came in as a developer, they would have to go to the 97 line because they came in early. They don't have to. They would have to ask for variances. They don't have those. So yes, they can build apparently because of the mistakes that we have, they can build the original plan. But to say this is substantially consistent is not even sensible. There's more buildings, there's more units. As you saw on the little display, it said, well, it's the same number of hotel units. Well, they've changed the number of other units. The number of units is increased. And secondly, it defies anyone to say that a nine-story, a 20-story building is the same of two 20-story towers. I happen as a lawyer, and that's what this litigation is going to go to, and recall last time the public got involved, is what is substantially consistent. I did the research. Now, I am not paid to do this, but I did it. It's defined in a lot of cases in a different ways. It's defined across a lot of cases. And it is so common a term that there's never a question what it means. The cases don't say, this is exactly what it means. I'm going to run out of time. But what I'm going to tell you is, this building is not substantially consistent, and it violates our codes. Have them come back, change the plan, and comply, and they ought to come to the 97 line. They're saying they moved off the 79 line. They did it because they have to, because the first plan encroached because their balcony stuck over the 79 line. I wish I could say more, but I can't. Thank you.
Gary, I'm not sure I'm pronouncing this right, Consigora, and Philip Barrett.
My name is Gary Consigora, and I just want to be brief, and I want to say that I support this project. It represents development for the city, and it's an excellent project. Also, it's a source of employment for everybody. Thank you.
Thank you. Just want to read the address into the record. 4848 Leo Lane Apartment 203 Palm Beach Gardens, Florida. Mr. Barrett?
Honorable Chairman and Board, I think I am part of the development team. By mistake, probably, I do my name there, so am I allowed to speak or because I'm part of the development team? I'm sorry, that may have been my mistake.
Okay. I would defer to our board attorney. Is that an option?
Well, I mean, I think if the development team has already presented their project, then I think it's really up to the public to speak at this time. So if he's, if he's part of the team, then I would say he would go ahead and move on.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
James Baker, Jose Rodriguez. Please state your name and address.
Jose Rodriguez, 2842 Leo Lane. Evening. I believe this project brings a lot of opportunity. I'm 24-year-old, and I would like to see in the future what this will bring for our community, all the jobs that this represents, although different cultures, because we're talking about a spa, we're talking about a hotel, will be bringing a lot of business, a lot of good stuff for the Riviera Beach community. Thank you. I do support them.
Thank you. Okay, we have a, James Baker, are you here? No. Okay, Larry Taylor and Kathy Flanagan. Not here. Randall Greenberry.
Good evening, Randall Greenberry. I am a land planner, a former land planner for Palm Beach County, City of West Palm Beach and--
Could you please state your address, too?
Randall Greenberry, 1354 Pebble Ridge Lane, Wellington, Florida. I'm a former land planner for Palm Beach County, the City of West Palm Beach, and Palm Beach County School District. I've sat here and I've listened to staff's presentation with regards to substantially consistent and the whole entire development. But one thing that I failed to hear in the presentation was the intent of the ZPA board at that time. And I'll be short, I think Mrs. Hubbard said it best. She was there during that time. She understood what the intent was. So with that respect, I'm in support of the project. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll give the people whose name I called that didn't show up in case they stepped out for a minute. James Green, Lee Cano, James Baker, Kathy Flanagan, Larry Taylor. Okay. That concludes the public comments.
Mr. Chair, if I may, just for the, you know, just to go overboard on, I guess, allowing public comment there, if Mr. Barrett, if he would want to comment, I would suggest we can go ahead and let it if he so desires.
Okay. Mr. Barrett?
Honorable people in the audience, honorable Councilperson Pardo, Councilperson Bruce Kaiten, I saw, I think he stepped out. I have been part of this community, and probably I have conflict of interest. On one side, I am a resident, which has been very much passionate I am about, and one side, I'm part of the development team. But as a resident, I really have invested 30 years of my, more than 30 years of my blood and sweat. And I started my career here, and I'm proud to bring something better in Riviera Beach where I can leave my legacy that where I started my career, and which has been so good to me, and so I want to do it. I do recognize that whenever you try to do something ambitious, there will be difference of opinion. And whoever spoke not to support it, I will very much like to meet with them, work with them, and try to find the common ground because they are part of the same community I am. And when you build the wellness, it doesn't feel good when somebody who is part of the same community and you have heartburn with them. That is not my wellness. I rather say, you know, not do the project and have the heartburn with my neighbor. I live the life where I believe my peace and happiness is more important than the money. So I would like to request board to do what is right, which is in the best interest of the community. This is the Lit Barrow Citizens speaking. And I think, in my honest opinion, if you guide the people right way as a leader, they will do right thing for you. I do recognize sometimes developers are slick. I am not a developer. I really think I'm more investors who believe in investing my blood and sweat in something I believe which will bring not only good, but it will do well also for everybody in what. I think you have been doing great job, and I want to thank you. What you do is ask your heart and soul and put aside the petty politics. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Gaggen, was the Singer Island Civic Association letter put into the record?
We do have a hard copy in staff's record. I don't know if you want to read it into the record or how you'd like to proceed. We were requested to read it into the record tonight, but--
We were not requested?
No, however you may, just for the record. Or if you'd like me to read it, I could read it.
Yeah, you can read it into the record.
Again, Jeff Gaggen, planning and zoning administrator. His correspondence was received through email, I believe it was later on this morning, probably around noon time, maybe 1:00. It's dated August 27, 2015, regarding the August 27, 2015 Planning and Zoning Meeting and 3100 North Ocean Drive Site Plan Review. It reads, Dear Planning and Zoning Board Members, on behalf of the Singer Island Civic Association, CICA, this letter is to strongly recommend the new site plan be denied. CICA has publicly advocated for the 1997 Coastal Construction Control Line for all future development on Singer Island. CICA was instrumental in founding the Beach Coalition, Protect Our Beaches, and CICA's number-one priority, key CICA issue, is protecting the Riviera Beaches' beach and all of Florida beaches and their environment. As we enter the height of hurricane season and now tracking tropical storm Erika, it is a reminder of the real possibility of Florida being within its path. The 3100 North Ocean Drive property may have gained an acre during the past 10 years, but at the end of the day, no one can predict the aftermath or impact a storm will have on Riviera Beach's fragile coastline. Keeping that in mind, CICA will not support the owner-developer submitting a new site plan versus developing the original site plan. CICA is of the opinion it must now abide by the city's 1997 Coastal Construction Control Line, which further ensures the safety and protection of its current and future residents and businesses. Recently, the city required two of the developers to abide by the 1997 Coastal Construction Line. It would be blatantly unfair to exempt this developer from those requirements. CICA strongly urges you to vote against this project as submitted or deferred for further study. Respectfully submitted, Andy Romero, Vice President, Singer Island Civic Association.
Thank you. Okay, we'll move on to board comments now. Mr. Barber, would you like to start us off?
Sure.
Just to reiterate, you can question either the applicant and/or staff on any of the issues or questions that you have.
I'm not sure which gentleman it was that was presenting the one, the economic effect that this project would have to the city. However, I do, I did take note that it was stated that 659 total permanent jobs would be created. My question to the developer is, and I'll say this, is simply, will applicants for those jobs be asked about past criminal convictions?
Mr. Barber, let me, this is Larry Smith with the record. That's not exactly an economic question, but I was at a meeting, yes, Wednesday, and I heard ban the box, and I've been reading about-- and I heard ban the box and I've been reading about it. And that's more of a state legislative question and I will have that discussion with my client. It's, I know what it is. I've been reading about it and I would think not. I think it's going to soon be a state statute, ban the box, where you don't have, that's not a question you're allowed to ask. But there's a job initiative that's going to be going along with this project and we'll certainly make sure that that's something that doesn't, well, doesn't happen. I understand it's like there's a box where you check and say, have you had a past criminal history, right? Isn't that, that's the issue, right?
To some extent. The issue can be a bit complicated. Which is probably why you have a rapture clearly around it.
Right.
But my, just to state my concern, Riviera Beach, like most other cities in this country throughout the state, has a number of residents who have post felony convictions. And oftentimes, those people would like to obtain a honest living, but they are unable to do so because oftentimes they are eliminated from the interview process before they even get to it. The application typically asks them whether they've been arrested, whether they've been convicted of any crime and then it also sometimes asks whether they have any felonious convictions, at which point they're basically cleared out from the employment process. So my concern is that the wellness resulting, what resulting fall would provide an opportunity for these people who would like to work, but under typical circumstances won't have that opportunity.
I understand the issue and I'm going to let Mr. Barrett answer that.
Sir, to answer that question, I'm working with Congressman Alcee Hasting on the same issue. Coming as an immigrant, I feel I'm a minority and as a minority, sometimes there is a stigma, what I see. And I do believe that sometimes, particularly minority people has been unfortunate or less fortunate where they get into small conviction or what we will consider in America criminal things. I do not believe those are really criminals. And those mistakes are made by accident or by sometimes ignorance. I do believe in the law. I never have broken any ethical rule or legal rule and I have been fortunate, but I do believe that there are very sensitive situation. And because somebody had a minor conviction like that, little theft or fighting in the neighborhood because some neighborhoods there is a fight and police report has been fired, I do not think that should be hold against the people. So as an employer, I have hired people, I should say that. I have few people working who are not considered to be the complete clean record, but I have used the HR policy to try to give them benefit of doubt and a second chance. I hope I answered your question, sir.
Thank you. Ms. Barber.
I just hope that, and I see some of our council member, councilmen members, council members in the crowd and I'm sure that's probably a concern there as well. So when it comes time to go before council, I just hope that you all have a point laid out.
Yes, sir. And I'll be happy to confidentially give you the name of the employee we have who has a past conviction and they are still working for us. That's not necessary. Thank you, sir.
Any other questions? No. Mr. Wickens.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman, I would just like to say, and I'm going to keep this short because I know we've been in for a long night. I like this project. I want to see this development start as soon as we can get to the city council approval. The reason for that, we will be getting good tax dollars. The second reason, people will have jobs in two and a half months after this event. And that's a big value right there. And plus, this project, once it's completed, will help put us on the map at what we are as far as where people that come to our beaches, our marinas and different things around our city and enjoy themselves. I am very glad this project has been started. I hope that everybody agrees. I know some people are not going to agree, but I think this is a beautiful project, Mr. Chairman. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. Quaid.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Questioning staff. And I'm not sure if you'll be able to answer it, but I believe yesterday at the CRA meeting, there was a proposal, expansion of the CRA boundary on Singer Island. Is this inclusive or this?
I've seen various expansion plans that are still in draft format. I don't believe that this specific parcel is. I believe that one of the comments previously may have alluded to the fact it was in the CRA overlay. It currently is not and I don't believe it's planned in the near future either.
Okay. Next question, Mr. Gagman. The concern that was brought up earlier, I know I heard you saying the zoning board of adjustments is the final decision. Can you elaborate on that as well as the specific conditions and how that relates to one another?
Certainly. So the zoning board of adjustment is a semi judicial board. So they have more authority than just a typical advisory board where if they make a final ruling, the item wouldn't proceed to city council. They would have the final say on the item. So once the zoning board of adjustment action occurred, it was basically proposed by, the applicant went forth to the zoning board of adjustment. Once the action occurred, it was final. So they have additional powers in comparison to other advisory boards, more so being a semi judicial board. As far as the multiple comments in regards to the condition and it has been debated whether or not an S has been present on the word elevation. And now it's being portrayed as if the condition doesn't exist whatsoever, which is the first time that I've heard it personally. And if I was an applicant that went before the zoning board of adjustment, proceeded to go to the city council and basically relied on this piece of paper as their final action as far as the zoning board of adjustments ruling, then I definitely would bring it up prior to 10 years later. It doesn't make sense to me that 10 years later, this condition is no longer applicable or it didn't exist in the first place.
Follow up, Mr. Chair. That's exactly what I'm going at. And when I asked the questions earlier about how was the applicant, I'm sorry, the action form being completed? Was it done at the meeting? Was it done at the following meeting?
Again, I wasn't at the meeting, but...
If I can finish so I can make sure that you understand the question that I'm asking. You know, when I asked that earlier, I wanted to find out, is there a typewriter on hand then 10 years ago? Did somebody actually do it then? Did they come back? Because when I first got the packet, it was 560 odd pages. I was just overwhelmed. In fact, I called you and said I couldn't even open it on my computer. But when I actually got into it, I noticed there were a lot of pages of minutes. And of that, I thought, you know, staff wanted to point out the fact that this is the intent of the zoning board of adjustments. So in going through it, I think it was explained earlier. The motion did not include substantially consistent. I do recall staff saying if the board chooses to consider it, but it was not included. But now, you know, I'm a little lost because we're being presented with conditions that wasn't in the motion and you're asking us to adopt the motion. And I think you yourself provided us the minutes and said, this is what the zoning board of adjustments intended to do. So I can't even sit here and support something if the intent, I remember we have a member that was on the board there come up and say that's not what they intended. So now you're asking us to still attach a condition that was not even involved in the original motion? It just seems a little unusual. And obviously, I imagine that you guys wanted that to be apparent because the minutes wasn't transcribed, at least from what I've seen until the month of June. And a good question is to what you just raised is, why didn't they bring it up? Possibly because the minutes wasn't transcribed until a month and a half ago. So I'm a little confused and that's why I certainly don't want to do the, as I've heard the Perry Mason, I got you. But it seems to me that there are some huge deficiencies here in the process. So there's no way that I can support something that's not really the intent of the zoning board of adjustments. And you yourself said it was the final ruling. So I had some other comments, but I'll back with some of that. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
If I may, Chair.
Go ahead.
This particular zoning board of action form was provided to me by the applicant. So this wasn't provided by the city to the applicant. This specific copy was provided by the applicant to me. And that's, that's my recollection, so. If that sheds light on your comment or question.
Okay. Ms. Jackson, you want to continue?
I have no questions. No comments.
Thank you. Mr. Coleman.
Just maybe two. First question, and it has been stated that the planning board of adjustment is the final decision maker. My question is, even though anyone may be the final decision maker, is that decision maker always correct in their decision making? That's just a question in general. The second thing is, the portion, the part where it says about consistent, we're tied up with consistent with the elevation. There's also that S elevation or slash elevations. At the time when this was presented, were there different elevations that were considered or proposed to be presented at any future date? That question I'd like to, if anyone knows the answer to that.
The site plan and the elevation that was presented tonight in the PowerPoint presentation, staff believes those were presented to the zoning board of adjustment. There could have been other images or plans or elevations presented. However, I wasn't present, so that's difficult for me to respond to.
Just a follow up. So how can we just stick to one elevation and there possibly could be more elevations or the discussions of different elevations or the possibility of in the future?
If I'm understanding your question, I think the condition was referring to whatever items were presented to the board. So for example, tonight, the site plan that's currently proposed. So if that was the site plan similarly presented to the zoning board of adjustment, then that would be the documentation that would be referenced and that would be substantially consistent moving forward. Thank you.
Other question? Ms. Chair.
If anything, I totally agree with a few people. Mr. Williams, I think, said it best, as well as Judge Rogerson. I listened to Mrs. Hubbard, who sat on that board. I think it's extremely important that we move forward with this project. Our city really needs the taxes. And I think it's a beautiful project. I was very impressed when I was over at the meeting to just see that film, very impressed that this would even come to Riviera Beach. While I understand the city's take on it, I do agree with the city at times, but I do feel like it's just imperative that we move on. And I'm so glad that I had the opportunity to meet with the developers and, and I just enjoyed their take and how they explained it very well. And I just went home and did my homework and I feel like this is something that the city of Riviera Beach really need. We have passed up so many projects and I think that it's just impeccable that we really move forward. So with that, I just agree that we need to move forward with this project. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Ms. James.
Two questions for staff while you're at the microphone, Jeff. The first question, the tenure gap. What was the city doing within that time with the applicant? Were there inspections that were going on? Were there fines being imposed? What did the city do after the initial site plan approval? Question one.
After the initial site plan was approved or congruent with that approval, there was formerly a structure on site. That building was demolished. And historically, the city has considered that as part of satisfaction to the 18-month requirement for pulling the building permit and starting development or construction on site for the resolutions condition for site plan approval. So after the demolition occurred, I believe there was a long period of time where I don't believe there were any fines running on site. I don't believe that either the applicant approached the city or vice versa. There was one amendment that occurred after the original site plan approval where there was a modification to the unit composition, which seemed to be rather minor, but it still went through the entire approval process. However, since probably 2006 up until April of 2014, I think there was just a quick gap.
So when that happens with projects within the city, we do nothing? There's no code enforcement, no letters that were sent? Nothing was doing, nothing was being done? The project was just dormant?
I believe the correspondence was provided to the applicant around 2005 or '06, establishing the fact that their project was active and consistent with the conditions of approval for the site plan, approval and resolution, as presented council. It's difficult for me to truly answer if there's any other discussions that ensued. I wasn't here for that entire length of time. I don't believe there were code enforcement issues there. Historically, I've heard of some vagaries on site and I guess police enforcement occurred, but I don't have firsthand knowledge of that. So if you want staff to go back and finds additional records or documents, we could do that.
I'm also kind of interested if there were any complaints from the residents about the project being dormant.
I don't know if I would say complaints. Now, this is my opinion, but if I had a unit that was neighboring the site, if it was just slightly overgrown, then it wouldn't concern me being that there wasn't a building block in my view. So I would be more concerned about future development than the maintenance of the site itself. But that's just my personal opinion.
Okay, second question. Understood tonight, we have two course, not one first?
One is the city's and I believe one is the applicant's.
Okay. My next two questions are for the applicant.
Larry Smith with the record. Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Smith, do you guys have any more letters of support from the neighbors or the surrounding residents besides the Tierra?
I don't know. We have, we have the letter from the Tierra and...
And the one that was provided in the packet besides those two? Or the one that was written in the video?
That's the one.
Okay. So just that one?
That's the one.
Just that one or any additional?
I'm not aware of any additional letters.
Second thing, for love of the video, there's no diversity. It's my comment. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Smith, if you can stand there. I have a couple of questions to get clarified. One of the things that was, that was mentioned a couple of times was that you've lowered the density. And the way I read the report, we were at 286 total units and you're now at 359 total units. That's a 73 increase in units, about 26%.
I think that, and I'm going to defer to Jim Brown on this one a little bit, but I'm going to say that I think that we meet the RH code. If you know the, you're familiar with the code. It has a mix of units. You can, you can mix them, hotel suites, hotel rooms, traditional condos... condos. I think the 2004 plan actually was amended, they changed the mix of units in 2005 and we're changing the mix of units again. But I don't think there's any change in the density, or maybe it's a little less. But Jim, maybe you could clarify that.
Well, the question then is, what are the, what, with the level of approval that you had at 286 units, okay? What impact does that have on changing the number of units to 359?
There are different types of units.
I understand that. I understand that there are different types of units, but you had an approval level, you had an approval level of one, and you know, we're still, I guess, debating the similar consistency. So that's my question on that.
My answer to that is there's no difference. Because if you've got a code that provides for a mix of units and you provide one mix of units, and actually they changed it in 2005, they changed the mix of units that was from 2004 and it was fine then, we're just changing the mix of units again, it seems like there's no impact made.
Well, the, the original change was, I think, about six or seven units. It was a very small number and I think, as Jeff mentioned, it was insignificant. So this is a significantly different number. But my question is that with the approval and the similar consistency question, okay, we haven't resolved that yet. Or, and maybe staff can input this too, are you violating that similar and consistent by increasing that by 26 percent?
I would say no because of the zoning allowance. You have different mix of units in the zoning code, we're changing the mix of units, but we're not increasing the intensity and density. When, as I recall, when the RH district got first approved, the analysis of what should be in the RH district to promote tourism and that sort of thing, they allowed this mix of units. And I think you're allowed, I mean, we've always been allowed to mix the units however you want, as long as you stay under the code requirements.
Mr. Gagnon, any comment?
If I can add, sir, the zoning, current zoning allows us to do 80 units per acre, so we can go up to 560 units. But we understand, keeping totality in mind, we are keeping units count way below. And also, the purpose of doing the unit mix the way we have done is to enhance the community there, rather than competing with existing condominium or existing hotel rooms. What we have done is to fit our particular business model for wellness and spa resort where people will be coming for three to seven nights stay. And that's why we have done this kind of combination.
Thank you.
Thank you.
To expand upon the answer provided and to answer your question, Mr. Kennedy, there has been a gain over the past 10 years in total acreage on the site. So the zoning district does allow for a mixed unit type of development, being that it's gained acreage and that's calculated in totality of the site. They are within the comprehensive plan and land development regulations as far as the number of units.
Good, thank you. The other question is, I think this was mentioned in someone's presentation, the original setback of the nine-story building was 230 feet off of A1A. The new setback is 136 feet, which is 94 feet closer to A1A with a 11-story higher building.
The, I know this, I don't know the exact dimensions and I can get somebody to come up, maybe Mr. Barrett can tell you, but the nine-story building was closer to the road than this proposal today. The 20-story element, I think that, if I understand correctly, the 20-story element that's in the staff report is a little close, it's closer by, I don't know, 20 or 30 feet than the staff report says. So there is a difference, but the overall setback on the front is more than the 2004 project. And we were asked, actually by staff, to move it back and we did.
I think, yes, sir, just nine-story building was less than 100 feet away from the street at that time because we had a variance and we are not using that. We are respectful of keeping the building away from the street and that's why we are 130 feet away from the street.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you, sir. And Ms. James, what you said, I noticed it very well and sorry about that, that that video is incorrect and it will be changed next time. Thank you very much for bringing that, my pleasure.
Any other board questions?
Mr. McCoy?
Mr. Gagnon?
Go ahead.
Do we currently still have that zoning board of adjustment?
The zoning board of adjustment no longer exists. There is a development special magistrate that would rule on any variance applications.
Follow up. Who would that development special magistrate be on how we come about having this component?
It came about through a code amendment, being that we had difficulty maintaining the zoning board of adjustment as far as having volunteers. We actually rarely have variances occur, so in essence, it became a defunct board. So the solution to that was to have one person who was held equal background and also knowledgeable about planning zoning be appointed as the development special magistrate moving forward. I believe that the name of the individual currently working in that position is Nancy Stroud. We have not currently had a hearing with her since the development special magistrate was put in place.
Is she on staff at the city?
No, she is an attorney for another law firm. She should be consulting for the city.
So she's appointed by, was it the city council or she just saw?
I believe she was selected through city staff.
Okay. So it's not a board anymore?
There is no zoning board of adjustment.
Okay.
Mr. Chair, are there any other comments I would like to make or motion?
Okay, just to clarify, based on my calculation of the, of the public comments, and we really have three choices, approve, disapprove, or postpone. And so just to, you know, you're perfectly free to make your motion now.
By my nature, I had a few other points of clarification.
Go ahead.
For board action. Thank you. So ultimately, I don't want everyone to think that this is a discussion over whether a project's good or bad. This is more of a procedural issue. I know that this is something that the planning zoning board has been discussing in length recently about who has authority to act, how, and what procedures are in place and how they're going to be followed. So being that the zoning board of adjustment made this ruling and from my understanding, had this condition of approval, that if this project is truly beneficial and still needs these requirements as far as the criteria that would allow these variances to be approved, then why not bring the site plan back to the development special magistrate and request the variances that are actually applicable to the site plan?
Can I ask a question?
I'm sorry, I'm going to keep going for right now.
Yeah, go ahead.
And then at the end, I'll be happy to answer questions. Additionally, it seems like this procedural fact is what the boards have been striving for. We've been looking to revise our own zoning board of adjustment procedures, how it's structured, things of that nature. There's been some buzzwords and terms such as common sense, integrity, do what's right. But again, when you look at what's substantially consistent, is nine stories substantially consistent to 20. A member of the public has made this point already, I think others may also see that. And to re-answer the question as far as whether or not it's injurious, I guess I didn't answer as exact or to the point as I should have. And what I should have said is I don't have the authority to tell you if it is or not. Nor do I think anybody else in this room has that authority. I think that a judge would have to make a ruling and they would have the authority to determine whether or not it's injurious. So I wanted to revise that comment that Drew Smith. Additionally, within the zoning board of adjustment action form, there's specific criteria that are applicable or not applicable to the site itself. So within the zoning board of adjustment action form, I know that we did have a former member, Ms. Hubbard did speak to the intent of their actions. Again, I was present at the meeting, so I can't speak to that necessarily. However, I'll just read the bullet point, conditions that they did see as applicable. So they saw that there was an existence of special conditions or circumstances, conditions not created by the applicant, special privileges not conferred, hardship conditions exist, minimum variance only to be granted, not injurious to the public welfare intended with the ordinance. And all of those applied to the variances that were approved. So again, I think it's, it's difficult to be 10 years removed and to try to qualify the intent without potentially revisiting that and seeing if variances previously granted to a different site plan were truly applicable to a newly proposed site plan. I can answer questions now, thank you.
Okay. McCoy, you have a question?
Yes, and obviously I don't seem to think I'm getting the answer that I'm really looking for. And maybe it's because I'm not explaining it and I'm really trying to slow down and make sure I don't get ahead of myself. You're referencing an action report and my simple question is, who creates the action report? Because that is completely contradictory of the actual verbatim minutes that you provided to the board, coupled with the public comment of the member itself. It's completely contradictory. When you ask the question, why not go back to the zoning board magistrate, I'm sorry, the zoning magistrate process? Well, if it's anything like this process right here, I can see why the applicant would not want to go through it. Because it's so ambiguous, it's so convoluted, and this is not my first video. You know, I don't, I don't care if I'm not liked or, you know, that's already coming. But what I will say is this, a lot of times things change and when we ask the questions, it looks or is portrayed as if we're not the ones that's understanding it. And I understand it perfectly well. If I go back to page 56, the motion was made, I didn't see substantial, substantially consistent in there. I asked you to probably, or perhaps could you explain the inconsistencies on how to get an action report that says it, but the actual verbatim minutes don't say it. So substantially consistent should not even be considered unless you give me some compelling reason why.
Because the legally binding document that the city has been referencing and the applicant has been referencing up until tonight has been presented to the board and it was signed by the chairperson of the zoning board of adjustment.
Right.
So that's my compelling evidence.
And when I asked you shortly ago, who creates that form, who types the form, when is the form done? I mean, you couldn't answer that, but now you're attesting that it was done and signed by the member. You know, for all I know, you know, it could have been typed in later on. That's why I'm just trying to understand the process. But for any of us appeared to vote on something that is different from the intent that you provided as the verbatim minutes, is a slippery slope and we really are, have to err on the bunts of caution. If it's not there, it's not here. And it seems that the action report that you couldn't even really give me a complete attestation of is not even, I don't want to use the word legitimate, but it's not substantial enough to show me anything other than the verbatim minutes. And with that, I would put a motion on the floor to approve the site plan application.
Second. Second and motion.
We have a motion and a second. And any discussion? Mr. Glaskas?
Sergeant Barber, the second?
Yes.
Sergeant McCoy?
Yes.
Margaret Shepherd?
No.
Julia Swigum?
No.
Brian Colton?
Yes.
Renee James?
Yes.
Eric Noddy?
No.
Are we voting to approve of this plan or to disapprove?
To approve it.
I would like to change my motion. I thought it was to disapprove.
I would defer to our board attorney on a procedure.
You would like to change your vote, I guess, is that correct? You misunderstood the motion. So your, your vote is to approve the site plan?
I thought it was to disapprove.
Right, but, but you wanted to vote yes to approve?
Right.
Okay. All right, then that's...
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I also misunderstood. I thought Mr. McCoy had some type of motion on the floor.
I did. He did have a motion. His motion was to approve the site plan.
I'm sorry, can we do it again, Mr. Chair?
Well, can we, can we do that again?
Well, you know, I think, Mr. Wiggum, I think with your comments and Ms. Shepherd's comments, I think you were both very clear on you meant to vote, you were very much in favor of this project. And I guess, Ms. Shepherd, just to address your question, your vote was to, to vote yes to approve the project.
Yes, sir.
So I think you can let the record reflect that there were, I guess, what, six votes yes and one vote no.
Right. Okay, and reflect that there was a misunderstanding in the motion. Okay. You want to, we can't, not even doubt, but...
Six votes yes, motion approved with Mr. Kennedy dissenting.
Okay, okay. All right, thank you all for your time.
Thank you for your time.
It's been a long, long evening. No, not yet. Excuse me, could everyone clear the chambers because we still have some business to do now?
Gentlemen, what else do we have left to do because it's getting late?
Yeah, I'm just waiting for them to get out and we have public comments, the county board comments. Yeah, well, this is on, this is on item eight. Can everyone please vacate their chambers so we can continue? Okay, we have public comments number 8A. Mr. Ward?
Good evening, Harold Ward, 2135 Broadway and 3930 North Ocean, a little bit north of the picture. Obviously, conflicts are becoming rampant. When this project came up, we had a special council meeting on Marina management and then tonight, there was a Port of Palm Beach meeting, so I favored the waterfront, which extended over and that's why the court reporter for the city couldn't get here in time. Conflict aside, the Port of Palm Beach is going to try for third time codification by legislation by the Florida Legislature of their act, which is deficient by many years. And then they deferred again after they found out that they had not made any of the changes that the city and the town of Palm Beach might like, nor have they ever bothered to take it to public. bothered to take it to public input. Number, you need to follow this. Number two, the 1996 agreement, interlocal agreement between the port, the City of Riviera Beach, and the CRA of Riviera Beach, went to a meeting back in the midsummer and was scheduled to go to a meeting on two October, which they blew off and said, we don't want to go, we want to defer and delay as possible, even though at least two of the board members, the more lucid ones, think that at least discussion between the gangs of five is very profitable. And thirdly, the city has been harassing Stone Rock, one of the forty-million-dollar contract with the port, over not processing any scrap metal, but just transferring scrap metals through the port and creating revenue for the port. And that now goes to a code enforcement hearing before what I believe now to be Nancy Stroud, since they couldn't specify her name, but the city has a new code officer, and that will be the 22nd to 23rd of October. So after they figured out that Stone Rock needs to have the port in legal bed with them, they have asked for mediation to occur on that mess, and that is something that I was involved with back in the mid-eighties when industrial zoning was created for the port. I think you guys did right tonight. If you had read the transcript, you saw that I was also quoted in there specifically, and I would have added to this if I could have gotten here in time, but I was thirty minutes late because of the port meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Ward. Okay, Jeff, any correspondence?
None other than the email received from Mr. Hamilton, again, that I mentioned at the beginning of the meeting where he did state that he was resigning from the board. He states it was due to circumstances beyond his control, so he doesn't really specify, but I'll follow up with him tomorrow on that.
Okay. Any project updates?
We do have a few projects that are coming down the pipeline. I believe we'll have at least one, if not two, for the September tenth Planning and Zoning Board meeting.
Okay. Okay, so we're definitely on for September tenth. Any, any board comments? Mr. McCoy?
Yes, and I'll be brief. Sorry to keep everybody here more than what we should, but, you know, these issues are becoming pretty common, that language has changed, that stuff has moved around. When it's too long, then you know something's wrong, and we should begin to realize that anytime there's so much stuff, I think it's more of a distraction, and they don't expect us to dive into the nuances. And, you know, to that, you can't expect that we should pass something, and it's not the exact intent of the board. And the question was asked earlier, why not go back through the process? I just don't think it's fair. If that was true, you're going to ask us to sit up here and be the zoning board of adjustments, which we're seven members now. I mean, ultimately, then we would make this decision about what's substantial. You know, that wasn't what the intent was, and that was according to the meaning. So, you know, that's my justification for the vote. I think everybody here who supported it understands. So with that, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Okay. Any other comments? Motion?
Motion to adjourn, Mr. Chair.
Second.
Thank you, everybody.